Yep. Yeah, my son won a few races. He did pretty good, but uh it was it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, there were a lot of machinist union members that, you know, built their own cars and
Yeah.
raced up there and
Yep.
built a good relationship with the Fierito family.
Oh, sure. Exactly. Yeah, it's one thing about racing. It's a it's a tight knit group, you know, it uh, you know, I mean, their their competitors highly, highly competitive, but boy, they really are a tight knit group.
Yeah, that John Ramsey, their general manager, used to be the communications director for Green River Community College, worked there.
Oh, interesting.
And then he built his own race cars and then he had the opportunity to go to work there and moved over, so.
Interesting.
Good guy.
Very good. Well, we're gonna give this about another minute or so. I know we have four of us here. Um, I don't see any other council members, but I don't mean that. See everybody on my screen.
I think we have Robin Malingas here.
Okay.
There she is.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order this evening. This is our city council study session for August twenty third, twenty twenty one, and I will call the meeting to order. And for public participation, we are meeting both virtually and in person. City council members are all meeting virtually this evening. Uh, for the public who wishes to attend, they may attend virtually through links on Zoom, YouTube, or can join by telephone. Sean, would please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Rog.
I'm here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Any announcements, reports, or presentations this evening?
No, your honor.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will move into our agenda items for council discussion this evening. And our first item on the agenda is the King County Regional Homelessness Authority Presentation, known as KCRHA, and I'll turn the meeting over to Director Tate.
Well, thank you and good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council Mayor. Uh, this evening, the first item on the agenda starts on page four in your packet. Uh, tonight, we have presenting to City Council from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority Alexis Mercedes Rink. And Alexis is a subregional planning manager for the authority. And Alexis is gonna share her screen in a moment and walk us through a presentation. Uh, but just to note that, um, I think we're all in learning mode right now because KCRHA is a relatively new um, organization uh that has been set up uh to help with homelessness in our region. So uh, with that, uh, I'll turn it over to Alexis and um, you can take it from here uh with your presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Jeff. And actually, I there's a special guest tonight. Our CEO, Mark Domes, should be also joining me to present, so I'm wondering if possibly they're in the waiting room and could be added. But while we're waiting for them to come aboard, hi, everyone. I feel so lucky to know a number of you from my previous role at the Sound Cities Association. So great to see you all. Um, my name is Alexis Mercedes Rink, um, subregional planning manager, and Mark was going to be starting us off. Are they here yet? If not, I can get the ball rolling and possibly they'll be joining us.
I Alexis, just real quick, I uh had provided IT with a list of people that should be promoted as a panelist ahead of time, so we're getting Mark in right now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that oversight. And I see, there they are. Hi, Mark.
Uh, hello. Uh, thank you all for having us. Um, I am, I am Mark. I am the CEO at the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Um, and I am glad to be with you all. Um, the Alexis, are you gonna share your screen or do you want me to share mine?
We go.
All right. Um, so uh, as was mentioned, uh, we represent the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Um, uh, do you wanna go to the, yeah, you wrote this, Jack. Uh, so, so uh, the authority um was created via legislation in two thousand nineteen after a year and a half long planning process um that culminated in an interlocal agreement between the city of Seattle and King County. Um, we are a special jurisdiction agency and were our job is to coordinate all publicly funded uh services supporting folks experiencing homelessness. So that's inclusive of outreach, diversion, shelter, raptor housing, transitional housing, and PSH um and most of the region's prevention efforts. Um, although uh in particularly the PSH and um prevention categories, there are some things that uh by nature of what the activities are, we are leaving um with our parent jurisdictions. Um, most notably capital funding and things that were deemed to be significantly farther upstreet than folks who are actively at risk of experiencing homelessness uh in the short term. Um, we are going to provide consolidated and aligned strategy um around all individuals who are experiencing homelessness. And so for the region, right? And I think that it's just really important um to be clear and that our job is to take um the work that the good work, right, that has happened across the county um and integrate it into a system-wide approach that's driving towards uh a standardized set of goals that we can measure our efficacy against, um, both as an internal accountability accountability measure, obviously, but then also so that we're um clearly identifying where there are gaps in the system, either from a resource perspective or simply from, uh, you know, what are what we're providing. Um, this timeline, I think, is uh, it's just always important and also um really helps contextualize for me just uh how uh wild the last couple of months have been. So as I mentioned, um, the uh interlocal agreement culminated uh in December of twenty nineteen. That process really kicked off in August of twenty eighteen when a team that I actually uh was also leading at the time, the National Innovation Service, conducted uh an audit of the existing system and published a report with ten action items. Um, number two on that list was to consolidate all of the um resources into a single entity. Um, that report really echoed previous reports from Bar Poppy, from the King County Auditor, um, all of whom found that uh due to uh really, really um uh intense fragmentation across the system, that it was not possible actually to drive the uh whole of public funding towards uh concrete goals. I'll also note that at the time, um, I did not anticipate that I would have this job that uh that came later. Um, the uh, there was supposed to be someone in my seat um in really February, March of twenty twenty, but um due to the pandemic, um, there were significant delays. Um, I wanna always caveat that by making it clear that those delays were because the the same folks who were supposed to help select a person for my role um pivoted all their attention into redesigning the system to be pandemic responsive and to save lives. Um, and I just think that's always really critical to say because I um, I uh, there have been enough number of conversations about like sort of like, oh, this lollygagging around the authority and like folks were not lollygagging. There was a lot of work and I always wanna give them the shine that they deserve for the work that they did to keep them alive whenever I talk about it. Um, as a result, um, the selection process didn't really begin until the fall uh of twenty twenty. Um, I uh, just in in candor, I didn't even apply until December of twenty twenty when, you know, I sort of uh sort of looked at what was happening and and uh became concerned that this work that the community had put so much effort into uh was um, you know, uh, under stress because of the pandemic. Um, I was confirmed in March and I began April twenty sixth. Um, my job has been to hire wonderful people like Alexis uh and to staff the basic operations of the authority. Um, with that in mind, I've hired all of the major department chiefs, um, and we're now hiring out uh staff to really drive our core functions. Um, and uh what we have our eyes on right now is our biggest initiatives um are really Alexis's work with the subregional planning, which will inform, right, how we um regionalize our approaches. And then um core operations, right? So so on January first, we will assume fiscal responsibility um for about a hundred and forty-five million dollars in base funding. That's before you get into CARES Act or ARPA dollars. Um, that is just our our annualized budget um and uh about um two hundred plus contracts with providers across the region. Um, some of that will be reduced as we reconcile contracts that are held by both, for example, the city and the county and are integrated into one contract vehicle. Um, but all of that will become ours on January one. Um, we uh moving into twenty-two and twenty-three, um, we will uh be implementing what we call our catalytic portfolio, um redesigning the entire system from the ground up. So our twenty twenty-two system will largely look the same, other than some key investments that we're looking to make. Um, but we simply don't have the uh bandwidth or ramp to uh rebid the entire system. And frankly, uh, to to do the the community work necessary to rebid it in the right way and in a thoughtful way. Um, so that work is happening now. Um, again, uh, the subregional planning work led by Alexis and then we'll be working more deeply with providers and community beginning in January um with the goal of putting out an RFP for the twenty-three system uh about March, April, um, with the goal of making awards around October. So that the twenty-three system that kicks in in January, I suspect, will be um pretty night and day from what we currently operate. Um, I think the most significant difference will simply be that it will be a regional system. Uh, and uh, that alone will be a real substantive change for us. Um, but I think that there will also be significant changes in strategy and where we put our investments and in what we are trying to get those investments to do, et cetera. Um, and I think that um frankly, hopefully before two thousand twenty-three, there will be significant, visible, and transformative change. I think that um, we have an opportunity with the ARPA dollars and um the CARES Act dollars that remain to uh really jumpstart some of the work that we are attempting to do um in in making our responsive more I'm sorry, making our system more responsive to folks experiencing homelessness uh and to really have a focus on ensuring that our our unsheltered neighbors in particular have pathways inside. Um, I uh have the uh um privilege of working with thirteen folks um on the implementation board um who are very well-respected leaders in the housing and homelessness space. Um, who uh, that's the board that I report directly to. Um, it's co-chaired um by Nate Caminos and Harold Odom. Um, Nate, some of you may know, he does quite a bit of work with Sound Cities and also uh with support. Um, and then Harold is a person uh who uh is currently experiencing homelessness and also like uh just someone that I've worked with uh over the years, actually, um, with the authority design. Um, I think that, you know, I just wanna offer that up as a as a key indicator of a structural change, right? That like that my position will report to someone who is experiencing homelessness, I think, is a really, really key distinction from how we have done things previously versus how we're doing them now. Um, that implementation board was uh the criteria to be on the implementation board were developed through a community-wide process. And so a number of folks expressed that that what they really wanted that implementation board to be able to do was to contribute substantively to policy based on experience, right? And and that, uh, you know, having done things like, you know, run housing authorities, run government agencies, uh, and uh, you know, contributed to the academic discourse around data and performance evaluation, et cetera. And so those are the kinds of qualifications that you see um on that board. Um, folks are nominated to that board and confirmed through uh essentially three pathways. Um, the King County Executive, the Seattle Mayor, Sound Cities Association, uh, uh, Seattle City Council, King County Council, and Live Experience Coalition. That same group of folks are echoed then at the governing committee level. That's the body that was responsible for confirming me to my position once the implementation board put my name forward. Um, they are also responsible for approving our um budgets um and uh, you know, uh, receiving a report on our system performance and and accountability measures yearly. Um, and then we also have an advisory committee that functions as uh who we work with solely around some of our continuum of care functions. But the majority of the work really happens between um my team and the implementation board on a day-to-day basis. Um, currently, our staff is about ten. Um, we expect um that in uh the coming months, we will grow to a staff of around fifty. Um, and uh, you know, potentially beyond that, depending on budget and uh what the needs of the system are. Oh, I should add, of course, uh, the Mayor Bacchus is on our governing committee and we are delighted. Um, so uh, one last thing, um, uh, is that, you know, I just wanna be really clear for anyone who is tuning in. I make sure to say this everywhere, right? That there will be no substantive changes to the twenty-two contracts. Like, we will issue them. The authority will be the contract issuer and holder for uh FY twenty-two. But um, we are not going to rebid anything, and so there will not be major changes to the contracts that folks have. Um, we will be the sole source of policy guidance and technical assistance um in setting strategy, right? So, you know, as the pandemic continues to unfold, as, you know, other shifts may arise, um, we will be the the uh primary source of of looking uh of who folks should look to to set policy, to to work with community members, to figure out the way forward. Um, our stance is, um, I think, as Alexis exemplifies, very collaborative. Um, so, you know, I think our goal is not to broadcast like, you know, we are the the fiat issuers, but more that like, you know, when folks need help, when folks need guidance, it's to us that uh they should be turning to. Um, and in turn, right, like, um, our goal and and my uh, my style, and I think uh, my my team's style is to do things in collaboration, right? So, you know, there's a reason why we say we can't do an RFP in that amount of time, and it's because the community conversation necessary to get to and align set of strategies that we all believe in is not possible in the timeframe, right? Like, we could, we could issue an RFP, like, you just put some stuff together and put it out, right? Um, but it wouldn't be in alignment with our values, and I don't think it would be, um, you know, what the community needs. Um, I think that uh we will um uh also be looking, I mentioned the full system rebid for twenty-three, but we'll also be looking for other communities um to join the interlocal agreement. I think that, you know, for for our team, we really see the ILA as uh an organizing vehicle, right? Which is a commitment that we all make as a region, that the authority is where we have the conversation about ending homelessness. Again, it's not about ceding all power to the authority or, you know, um, propping the authority up on, you know, sort of uh in endless budget, um, but really about saying like, this is where we have this conversation. And I think that's important uh to me personally, um, that it, you know, sort of reflects that uh this is a collective will, not the will of a couple people. Um, I'll also say, just, you know, uh, as uh we sort of segue into Alexis's work specifically, that um part of why Alexis's job is so important is that in the design process of the authority, uh, the team that I led then um wasn't really able to to do deep dives all over the county, right? And we were clear then, uh, as I remain clear today, that there were many things that we did not know because we didn't talk to people and we didn't have all of the conversation necessary. And so the insertion of a mandatory subregional planning exercise into the ILA at that point was something that my team uh was very behind because whoever was in this seat was going to need more information and to have more conversation in order to appropriately regionalize the system. Um, and so I do wanna be clear that, um, you know, having having led that process, having uh, you know, done uh, you know, more engagement since then, I think we are very clear, um, you know, every day that there's always more to do and and uh are very focused on making those connections. Um, not in a uh one-time or tokenistic way, but, you know, really ensuring that we are building ongoing relationships with you all, with community members, with people experiencing homelessness all across the region, again, so that the work that we do is really about our collective will to end this crisis. I think that's all I've got. I think it's, oh, no, one more thing. Um, thanks, Alexis. So uh, the last thing I'll say is uh, we do have a catalytic portfolio. These are the things that we are looking to make investments in um in the near term um that we believe can fundamentally transform the nature of the system uh and and are so important that we're prioritizing them outside of normal budget cycle, looking at public-private partnership and and really ensuring um that we can move as quickly as possible. Um, the first of those is the peer navigation framework. Um, so we uh have seen in other systems, particularly behavioral health, substance use, uh, that um peer navigators um are a phenomenal force when it comes to uh helping people to navigate complex complex systems um with success. And we have seen that to some degree within the homelessness system. Um, we've simply never brought it to scale. And so one of the things that my team is very focused on is bringing that kind of capacity to scale. Um, the uh both the the data and the um uh what we hear from people experiencing homelessness are are very clear that um, relationship and having a relationship with a person who can help you get through all of the many, many things, right? Um, really does make a significant difference on the trajectory of someone's experience of homelessness and how rapidly they connect and and uh maintain connection with housing. The next thing we're after is a a by-name list and and high-quality data writ large, I think. Um, you know, when I use the term by-name list, I wanna be really clear that I'm not just talking about a, you know, sort of list of names, but it is really important that we know uh who people are and where they are as well, right? Like, ultimately, our job every day is to house people through the deployment of resources and alignment with people's needs and where those needs are located. Um, and so we really need to ensure um that we are able to say, you know, this is the number of folks in Auburn who need our support. This is the number of folks in Issaquah and Black Diamond and Carnation, right, like down to the the level of person so that if we see a problem growing, um, we can, you know, realot resources. Um, if we see a success, we can learn from it uh and really wanna make sure that we're able to do that. I also think that this will help us to understand what the delta is in the system between what we currently have available in terms of resources and what we need. Um, I think it's very clear that we need more based on the number of people who are experiencing homelessness in the region. Uh, but uh what those resources should be driven towards is something that only uh people themselves, right, who are experiencing homelessness can tell us. And data, a data set like this can give us that information. Um, and then finally, uh, bridge housing is something that we're very focused on, and this sort of builds on the really great work um that has happened uh through uh Health Through Housing and other initiatives um that have really looked to ensure, right, that we have housing options for people experiencing homelessness and that we're not over-indexing everything we do into the shelter space. Shelter is important, um, but shelter is supposed to be a crisis response, not the thing that you wait in for years while your permanent thing is developed or built or you wait for a voucher, et cetera, right? And much of what we see right now is that folks go into shelter, are told that the, you know, their um uh voucher unit or their low-income housing, et cetera, might be two, literally two or three years on a waitlist, right? Um, and so what that means is administratively, what we've said to people is they can either wait in shelter or they can wait outside, right? Um, and many folks, um, because of the the nature of how shelter is run, that it is not supposed to be long-term, right? Can't wait in shelter. Um, I know many people, for example, who work full-time, and because of how emergency shelter rules are set up, um, it isn't conducive for them to keep their employment and stay in shelter. And so they do, it actually just isn't an option. Um, so we need to make sure that we have something that people um can uh wait for their permanent designation inside of, but is housing. Um, and so our team is gonna be very focused on the development and deployment of that portfolio as well. Thanks, y'all. Alexis?
Well, thank you so much, Mark. So in my role at the authority, subregional planning manager, I'm leading ongoing equitable engagement with all of our jurisdictions, our providers, our community members with lived experience, and community-based organizations, really to understand the unique needs of each subregion, North King County, East King County, the Soqami Valley, South King County, and the Seattle metro area. Understanding those assets' needs, um, just the service landscape overall. And so what's really involved in subregional planning are these six key components. The first piece, being able to understand our full landscape of all services available to people experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness. And I mean this in a catalog sense, but also in a mapping sense, where are our services? The second piece is around um our funding and investment into service response, looking at where are dollars coming from and where are they going to? The third component is really centering lived experience and understanding how um what folks are experiencing when they're entering and getting into service response um within each subregion. And we're working collaboratively with the Lived Experience Coalition to develop strategy for um how we can garner this information and and really work with our folks with lived experience. The fourth piece is then really informed by what we find in one, two, and three, and that's identifying our gaps and needs by subregion or how we can address um the crisis at hand. The fifth key component is really what are we going to do about addressing the crisis by subregion? What is needed? Um, what are things the authority can do? How can um jurisdiction support the work, um, the role of business and philanthropy, and so on? And the last key component is around timelines. When can we hope to get some of this work done? Um, to give you all a flavor of, as as Mark said, a lot of this is about deep engagement and listening and understanding. Um, so this is just to give you a sense of who I've been engaging with. Um, and already, since this uh slide actually went out last week, uh, I could probably update the numbers here. I've made contact with um over eighty different folks in South King County, um, representing over sixty different organizations. Um, these are just some examples of the organizations I've connected with and met with. Um, you'll see some of them are service providers, direct service providers such as Kent Youth Family Services, Multi-Service Center, Kent Hope, um, Mind Maple Place, but others are community-based organizations that are staffed by and serving Black Indigenous and communities of color. Um, I believe also, um, for example, I'm also um touching base with um Muckleshoot Tribe representatives of coming up soon. Um, and the bullet point of this below are examples of some of the subregional kind of convenings that I've been attending to also solicit input from and learn from and just talk about the work of the authority and what they're seeing in South King County in particular. So just to also give you a sense of the kind of things that we're hearing so far in these conversations, we're hearing loud and clear that transportation issues are a huge piece of what of um kind of the issue of how folks are accessing services in South King County. There's a lot of issues with capacity for our providers. There's also some lack of clarity around providers and outreach scope and relationships, a desire for ownership, leadership, and facilitation for some of our regional convenings, like the meetings that I mentioned before on the bullet point list. Um, and there's also uh not a clear dedicated South King County outreach strategy and a lot of energy around wanting something like that. So how are we defining subregions thus far? This is an evolving slide as we continue to learn how folks are accessing services. Um, the piece I'd like to point out here is we are currently figuring out how we can best regard South King County because right now it is the largest subregion based on this kind of classification. And so we are exploring, um, as we've heard from some of the unincorporated areas such as Skyway, there's a desire for possibly an urban, unincorporated King County distinction, but then also exploring what a southeast King County distinction would look like. So doing a lot of listening and learning to really understand how folks are accessing services and whether or not bisecting South King County in some way makes the most sense. So just also a little bit about what's coming up next from our work. In September slash October, um, we're coming out with our snapshot report. Um, and within that snapshot report, really, the snapshot report is like a formal update on um the progress around subregional planning. It's going to include information on um the information we've and data we've been able to collect on those first three key components. So information on um funding, information on um how much we've been able to collect on our landscape of services. Um, and with that key component three about lived experience, the snapshot report will include a description of how we are going to go about garnering and and working with um the Lived Experience Coalition and our my community members with lived experience to inform that piece of um subregional planning. Um, also within the snapshot report, I'm including information on who we've been engaging, how we've been engaging, and how we're going to implement an equitable decision-making framework as we develop into those further key components. Um, some other pieces that the snapshot report will include um are a uh defined timeline that shows kind of which phases we're in, just so everyone can follow along as we build towards completing subregional plans. And the last piece that's included, will be included in the snapshot report, um, are clear-defined subregions. So hopefully, we'll have uh settled and figured out how we can best kind of regard South King County in subregional plans, and we'll just have those finalized um subregional distinctions in that report. Um, the last piece I'll add is we are um, we are working collaboratively also with a city of Auburn staff from your human services department to outreach staff um to um work on getting a city visit scheduled where we can come say hi, hello, and see a local providers in Auburn. With that, I believe that wraps up our presentation for tonight, and I think if there's any time, Mark and I are happy to take questions.
Also, questions for Alexis or Mark? I see Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and appreciate the presentation uh and want to congratulate you for your bravery and taking on such And want to congratulate you for your bravery and taking on such a huge task. And we appreciate that, knowing that it's a pervasive issue across our region. Add two questions, if it's not too much. I'm curious how you are recruiting and identifying people with lived experience? And then number two is looking at the list of sub regional areas, the communities that you've listed. It looks like South King County is a huge, maybe it should be upgraded to a region in and of itself. But I I'm curious, you know, that because there seems to be a lot of diversity within those communities, like for example, Skyway and West Seattle and Black Diamond, you know, there's probably different issues facing these different communities. So I was curious if you might comment on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. I'll comment on the first piece about recruiting and identifying people with lived experience. We do have a lived experience coalition, which is a coalition of about forty to sixty folks who are currently experiencing homelessness or have lived experience with homelessness. And there is some good regional representation among that group, but we want to be intentional that we understand a lot of the representation there is primarily Seattle. And so I've been working with and talking about the lived experience coalition with not only our providers, but also community members. And we'll be working with our different kind of sub regional leaders to identify folks within the sub regions to talk to. So looking to their expertise to bring folks from the different sub regions into the fold as we develop that key component. So that's kind of the, your first question. Your second question about South King County being such a huge sub region should be really its own region. You are absolutely right. And I think what we're grappling with is, is this Southeast King County part is we're trying to figure out if it is appropriate or best to, you know, section out like Black Diamond, Maple Valley, Auburn and section out in some sort of way. So I'm struggling with kind of the same piece you are. It is a, a large sub region and trying to figure out how we can best draw that line. It's always a complicated process drawing a line, but trying to figure that out.
Thank you. Also, a return.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Alexis. Really amazing, great stuff. And I'm really grateful that our mayor is on the board there. And thank you, Mark, for taking, taking such an important role. I'm just sort of curious, you know, we, we have a relatively new community court here in Auburn. And, you know, really trying to just sort of, you know, the focus is to help people's lives get better. I suspect there will be some people, if we don't already have some people going through it, who are experiencing homelessness. And I'm just wondering, is there, is there, are you guys going to be working with our community court at all?
I can take that up. I recently learned about your community court program and I was in conversation with someone about possibly attending. But as far as, no, I think there's absolutely spaces for collaboration, but I don't think they've been formalized yet.
I can speak a little bit more broadly to sort of our, our legal system engagement. I think we have two different policy working groups that are currently underway that Alexis doesn't manage. So I would be probably the best person to speak to them. So we have one policy working group focused on acuity. So that's folks who are, have significant behavioral health substance use needs, right? And oftentimes are frankly quite visible in our communities, even if they don't make up the majority of folks experiencing homelessness, right? They, they are literally quite visible and also from a system level are quite visible in terms of how they are interacted with. And what we identified pretty quickly is that there are some providers who are exceptional at working with people with high acuity, but there is no system level plan for people with high acuity, right? And so in order for us to ensure that it is not a sort of catch as catch can, right? We're pulling together a small group to help sort of map that landscape. And then we're going to do some community engagement, you know, regionally to sort of understand and then look to put some action items that are aimed at us. As a government agency, I think we can recommend that we do things as opposed to recommending that other people do things. And try to have some of that in place by January, February at the latest. The other group that we are convening is focused on safety. And so I think it is really critical that when we have conversations about community safety regarding folks who are experiencing homelessness, we appropriately disaggregate discomfort from threats to safety, right? And that in, in many instances, we might see something that makes us uncomfortable, but we are not actually unsafe. And there are safety issues and we actually need to be able to talk about both. And so our safety planning is, is very much in the same space of like, how do we disaggregate between what is something that might be best responded to by services versus what needs to be responded to by public safety agencies, right? We are not a public safety agency. And how do we ensure that there is a really axiomatic way of making that decision, right? So that it isn't sort of a case by case, like, uh, what are we feeling? Who calls, who picks up the phone? But there really is some thoughtful planning about like what constitutes what. And I think in both instances, the, or for both groups, I should say, the community court would be of interest for us in terms of a stakeholder to connect with and, and learn from. And then long term, I think there is certainly a partnership to be crafted there as well.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Yeah, certainly. You know, I, I think our, the way our team court set up, it's sort of a post filing diversion. But, you know, I mean, any kind of diversion and certainly if we get more towards pre diversion and even some of the blank cases, you know, it'd be really good to have a good partner to work with.
House Speaker Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alexis and Mark, thank you very much for your presentation today. I would like for you to elaborate on the rebidding contracts a little bit. And as far as your timeline is concerned, I see the visible change is going to happen in 2023. My question then is, when are you getting the funding? That you can start working on, because 2023 is three years from now. And as far as I'm concerned, I would like to see the change right now, but that's not realistic. So please elaborate on that.
Sure, I'll take that one. So as I mentioned, our, we will assume jurisdictional authority over the funding streams, January 1st. But there is not the, the time to rebid the system between when I started April 26th and January 1st. And that is, I mean, frankly, that's purely the result of pandemic related delay, right? Like the, the goal when the system was signed into law in 2019 was that we would be looking at a, a brand new system now, actually. But we're just, the, no one anticipated the global pandemic and it has caused, you know, as, as in an unavoidable way, significant delays in that capacity. I think though that, you know, the, the need to move with urgency with the crisis of this magnitude is not lost on us. And that's where that catalytic portfolio work comes in. And is specifically why we zeroed in on those three things is places to put our effort outside of traditional appropriations mechanisms and to pursue, you know, pub, public, private partnership with our business community and philanthropic communities in order to see if we can activate some of those things sooner rather than later. I also think that there are opportunities that are likely to exist that are in the American Rescue Act dollars and frankly still unspent portions of CARES Act dollars. And I think that our team will be doing and is frankly already doing some really careful evaluation of, you know, sort of where there might be underspend and how we might redeploy some of those dollars to jumpstart certain portions of the system that we expect, right? To, to try to move substantive change within. But, you know, sorry, I'll add, right, that like, I appreciate that question quite, quite a bit because I, I think that it is critical that we as a region understand that at, at the, at the minimum, and I can't stress this enough, at the minimum, there are about fifteen thousand people who are experiencing homelessness in the region, right? And so we can't actually do any of the sort of like, oh, let's do a really long planning process. Let's, you know, like, we have to rapidly isolate what works, some of which we already know, right? There are national best practices that myself and my team are aware of that we're not really doing. And some of it, right, will be about, as Alexis is demonstrating, right? Like rapidly working with our, our sub regions and our sub regional partners to sort of design and tailor, right, the work that needs to be deployed. But I, I really can't stress enough that we have to break out of our, our, our talking, right? And we, we really do have to move to urgent action because people, people's literal lives, right, are dependent on us recognizing that this is a crisis, not an administrative exercise. And so I can't stress enough how much I appreciate your question. And I, I want anyone who's listening to this, right, to hear that we share that concern and are willing to work with anyone who can help us move faster.
Thank you.
House Member Trump.
Alexis and Mark, thank you for a great presentation. And Alexis, it's so nice to see where you've ended up. We miss you at Sunset Association, but you know, I know that these, this organization is going to be fabulous with you on there. And Mark, yes, you are so right. You're so lucky to have our mayor on this board and we're so proud of it. But I, I, I really appreciate Councilmember Brown's question about South King County, how large it is. So it would be really nice to see what you folks can come back with, you know, on, if there's a possibility of, you know, breaking this down or something. But it is a big job there that you guys got on your hands. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any other questions, Council? I don't see any. Mark and Alexis, you both mentioned the word crisis. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear you say that. Every day when we drive our communities in Auburn, as you know, with Kent, hey, we're doing a tremendous job of meeting with the folks where they are and trying to provide the assistance we can in a very timely manner. But each day when we drive and we see the folks that are unsheltered, and each one of us council members doesn't have a thought in the back of our mind about what else can we do? Nice to see the authority taking shape after all these years of other efforts of trying. And now we have an authority in place that work regionally collaboratively, as you said, and to hopefully move this needle forward quickly. And Mark, also you, you mentioned urgent action. Boy, those are great words. It couldn't be more urgent and it couldn't be more timely to take action. We need to take as quickly as we can to move this, this dilemma we're all facing to a point where we can not only convince the unsheltered to be sheltered, but also to give them all the assistance and help they need to be successful and to have that self preservation so they can continue to move forward in their lives. Thank you both very much, your presentation. Alexis, it was wonderful seeing you again. And again, thank you for all your work you did with all of us on the SCA. But I'm glad you're part of this and we'll continue to see you and be part of this as we partner together with this. So great presentation, both of you. Thank you again for the presentation this evening. Okay. Great, Council, we will now move into our next item on the agenda, which is ordinance number 6832 with Director Thomas.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk to you about ordinance number 6832, which is the ARPA spending plan. A little bit of history, you may recall back on August 2nd, the council adopted the fourteen point seven million dollars that has been awarded to the city of Auburn from the federal government through the American Recovery Plan. We had originally received the money back in May. And between May and now, we have continued to receive guidance from the federal government about how that fourteen point seven million dollars can be spent. We started to get quite a bit more information around June, July. Actually, the beginning of July is when we got really the, the most updated information on the allowability of spending the ARPA money. We were kind of in a, in a holding pattern, waiting for programs and brainstorming projects and programs for that money until we actually knew how we could spend it. So beginning about mid-July, we had an ad hoc committee composed of Deputy Mary Decourcy, Councilmembers Jay Raj and Baggett, and they reviewed really kind of all of the, the framework around ARPA and how it can be spent and how it could potentially look in Auburn. And so with looking at all of the federal guidance that, that we have currently, as well as really the needs specific to the city of Auburn, they are proposing and along with management and the mayor, proposing an ARPA spending plan and how we can allocate that fourteen point seven million dollars. So before I go into the details, which there's a summary of those details on page eighteen of your council packet, I wanted to kind of go over high level the seven main categories that the, the, the city is allowed to use that money. So the, the seven categories that the federal government has given us as far as how to use this money. The seven main categories is supporting public health response, mitigating negative economic impacts, services disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay to essential workers, infrastructure projects, revenue replacement, and administrative costs. So what does that all mean? For supporting public health response, there's really kind of two main categories under this. And that is how do we encourage the, the prevention and the spread of COVID-19? So whether that is improvements to our facilities, whether it is PPE, whether it is encouraging vaccination, status of our own employees and those in the community, the ARPA money can be used for all of those things. The other piece to the supporting public health response is the services side of it. So mental, the mental health impacts as well as the actual physical health impacts that COVID has had on our community and how do we provide services back to our community for the prevention and care of our, of residents in our city? For mitigating negative economic impacts, that is for supporting households. It's for supporting small businesses and it's also for, for supporting businesses and industry that were disproportionately impacted by COVID. As well as there's a lot of subcategories. It could come in the form of grants or small business loans to, on small businesses. But tours, the aid and promotion of the tourism industry in Auburn, really just a lot of different ways for the city to be able to offset the economic impacts that have happened in Auburn, whether it directly helps on the city of Auburn or whether it helps the residents and businesses in Auburn as well. The services to disproportionately impacted communities, that is based on qualified census tract areas, which is really income driven and we have that census data. And based on that census data, we are able to focus some of that ARPA money in the respect it helps promote healthy childhood environments, education, and also providing housing services to folks that live in those qualified census tracts. Then there's the premium pay to essential workers. This is really a retro pay component, which recognizes the fact that there are some, there are some employees that had to report to work and were put at a higher risk status because of their potential exposure to COVID. And it allows government to be able to pay those essential workers a premium pay. A caveat to this is that this was allowed by federal law, but there is still some legal parameters that our, that many, many city attorneys are, are working on right now, which is, is it actually legal in Washington? Because we do have a gift of public funds law that could be in direct conflict with the premium pay with, as it relates to retro payment. Then it also allows for infrastructure projects, which is very specifically water, sewer, storm, and broadband infrastructure, whether it is major maintenance, rehabilitation, or actual system expansion. Revenue replacement helps cities be able to Revenue replacement helps cities be able to replenish the revenue that they have lost as a result of COVID. So this is not just the revenue that we lost in 2020 during the pandemic, but also the, the revenue inflation that we would have expected to see in 2021, 2022 and 2023 as well. So we can use that money to backfill lost revenue. There are some requirements about if we are using it for revenue replacement, very specific guidance on the types of services then that we are using. We can't supplant our, our general fund budget. We have to use, continue using it for items that were originally budgeted before COVID. And then the last piece is the administrative costs. This is really for the administration of the grants, but it also is targeted towards kind of equity in the community and making sure that we are connecting the ARPA dollars to the communities that need the most. And it's mostly tied to the services to disproportionately impacted communities and making sure that we are connecting the right services to the right communities and to the right people. So that's kind of the high level summary of what is allowed for the ARPA spending. We obviously have a list of needs that exceed fourteen point seven million dollars. So it was a very difficult task for the ad hoc committee to really look at all of the needs throughout the city and really kind of prioritize them down into these major categories. And as you can see in the summary on page eighteen, we are proposing four, four point one, almost four point two million dollars to the supporting public health response, which most of that goes towards the, the services side of the supporting public health response. So the, the mental health services, the housing services tied to the supporting public health response. Two point two million dollars to the mitigating negative economic impacts. We've got six point nine, almost seven point, six, almost seven million dollars to the services to disproportionately impacted communities. Eight hundred thousand dollars towards revenue replacement. And this is actually a little bit, this, what this revenue replacement will be, would be specifically used for is the lost contract revenue from our SCORE. We are an owner agency at the SCORE jail. And do, since the pandemic began last March, there's been reduced contract revenue that this, that SCORE has been receiving from the contract agencies and they are, they have a budget gap. And so when there's a budget gap, that comes back to the owner agencies, which Auburn is one of them. And we need, we will need to be paying our pro-rated share of that gap. And right now the estimate is about eight hundred thousand dollars, which is why we have an eight hundred thousand dollar figure under the revenue replacement line. And then five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in administrative costs. I want to, to emphasize that this is really a high level spending plan. There are a lot of potential projects that we can do. We have a long laundry list of potential projects, but as far as actual costs and timeline of those projects, there's a lot of uncertainty there. So that's definitely where we'll start. But over the three and a half years that we have to commit this money, there may be some, some tweaks along the way. This ordinance does call for a, a report, a quarterly report back to council, keeping you updated on, on the status of projects and which projects we are moving forward with and making sure and being transparent with how those projects are in fact in line with the spending plan in this ordinance. So with that, I'm sure there's probably a lot of very specific questions, so I will open it up to questions you may have.
Council, questions for Jamie? Councilmember Sterns.
Very sorry. Thank, thank you Deputy Mayor. And, and thank you Jamie for a presentation. I, I wanted to go back to and, and an item which I still feel is, is really important. And maybe I could just quickly share my screen, if that would be okay? Is that okay? And I know I have to send it to.
Yeah, you can share your screen if you would please send me the document that you're referring to, so I have them for the record.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. Wait, share, share screen. Yeah, oh, share button. Okay, um, so on, on the premium pay, I, I know that there, there's, it appears to be that even, even though it's a federal program, it doesn't pre-empt state law. So using it retroactively to provide premium pay seems to be out of the question. But MSRC, as alternately said, prospective pay is okay. And, you know, the, the funds can be extended until December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So there's actually a significant amount of, you know, help that could be provided. So I wanted to make that clear. It, it's actually, it's a significant item that we still can take advantage of, even if we can't use retroactive pay. So I, I did want to make that clear to everyone on the council. And then I also wanted to share one more thing. Wait, stop share. Okay, and now share again. Voila, voila. Okay, so yeah, going back to premium pay. You know, it just seems that it is so important for us to at least look at this. You know, are the frontline workers in Auburn, whether, you know, there are police and fire workers, whether there are grocery workers, restaurant workers, people at multi-care nursing homes, home healthcare providers, waste management, Republic, you know, childcare workers and teachers. I mean, they were all out there doing jobs and, and, you know, many of them not only put themselves at risk, they, they really put their families at risk. And a lot of the people doing that, you know, really are on the lower end of, of the wage scale. So, you know, that, that is premium pay for the workers who helped us live our lives. You know, is an important component of the American Rescue Plan. And this is something that we as a city, we can do something about that and we can help them, even if it is prospectively. So I, I'd like to have us consider that if that's okay, you know, when, when we vote on, on the ordinance. And maybe, you know, I don't know what the appropriate mechanism would be to ask the ad hoc committee to, to take another look at this issue or just to, you know, ask for a, a vote next week. But I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to raise this because I think it really is important. The people in our city who put their own lives at risk for us, or for me, you know, I, I'm just so grateful and it seems like this is something we can do to help our, our citizens out. So thank you for allowing me to share my screen.
I can't, I can't necessarily speak to the process for, maybe our city attorney could help us navigate how we would maybe take, bring it back to the ad hoc committee to discuss the premium paid piece a little bit more. But maybe just to add to the conversation a little bit, which is, I, I don't think that anybody in the ad hoc committee or any of the conversations that we had discounted the importance of the premium pay. I think where we started feeling constrained was with the fourteen point seven million dollars. How do we define the group of essential workers? And then how do we quantify what that premium pay prospectively or retrospectively would be? And if you start even at the smallest amounts, depending on how you draw parameters around all those people, our fourteen point seven million dollars is gone before we even start. And I think prioritizing all of the other projects that we've been wanting and needing to do even prior to COVID. And they've been kind of fast-tracked in needing attention, even more attention now since COVID. I think that those are some of the priorities that came towards the top in the ad hoc committee's discussion. Again, I don't necessarily want to speak for the ad hoc committee, but I know being a part of some of the conversations, even at the director's level, that was something that we really struggled with is how do we quantify? How do we say some people are eligible and other people aren't when many people were putting their lives at risk from the very beginning, like you had pointed out?
You're, you're right. That's incredibly hard. But we have to quantify. I mean, everything under ARPA gets quantified. And there, there's, I mean, there, there's no way there's enough money, even if this was a, I don't know, a quintillion dollar program, still wouldn't be enough money probably. So yeah, lines are always going to be drawn. And, you know, I know in other cities, other cities have, you know, come to make the same kind of choices. Some cities have said, well, just fire employees. Some cities have said pharmacy, grocery, that's it. Other cities have said home healthcare workers and childcare workers. It, it just, it does vary. But I mean, the reality is it can be done. It's difficult, but it, it can be done. And, and, you know, you raise all these incredibly important policy questions and that's, yeah, I just wanted to just sort of throw this into the mix. I mean, you know, there may not be an answer that, that works really well, or maybe it works okay. But I just wanted to have us at least, you know, talk about it. And that was my, my goal. So thank you very much, Jamie. I appreciate all the thought and helpful advice too.
Councilmember Rome.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and thank you again, Director Thomas, for your presentation. I, I too saw that zero in the hazard pay and, and the, you know, the question about gifting public money, I, I certainly understand that. I think it's one of the strengths of, of our state government that we don't just willy-nilly provide pay or gifts, I, I should say. But I'm curious and maybe our city attorney, Como, would be more appropriate to answer this question. But has there been a consultation with the Attorney General's Office on this specific question? And number two, you know, when we discussed a previously, a previous ordinance under consideration concerning hazard pay, the question that I heard from members of our council here is, what about city employees? And, and I think that that's a really good question. And with respect to prioritizing, you know, it's, it is a difficult question to answer. But I think one of the things that we could look at was who is public-facing? Who has, has been, you know, servicing and serving our citizens, our residents here in Auburn on, you know, that basis. But thank you very much.
Any other questions for Director Thomas?
Deputy Mayor, my question about the consultation with the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. City Attorney Como, would you have a statement or Jamie something on that?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor. And thank you for the question, Councilmembers Brown and Sterns. So there has not been a consultation with the Attorney General at this point. It's not necessary, I would say, because the Attorney General took it upon himself with the CARES Act funding to issue an opinion that stated that the CARES Act funding could be used despite the prohibition in the Washington Constitution, Articles two, Section twenty-five, that as Jamie mentioned, you cannot provide extra compensation to a public employee for services already rendered. And then in addition, there's the prohibition of the gift of public funds under Article eight, Section seven of the Washington Constitution. So under CARES Act, last year, the Attorney General issued an opinion. This year, he has not issued an opinion. The Treasury guidance was issued in June of this year. So we are in this scenario where the federal government would authorize it, but we have two constitutional prohibitions against it for work already performed. Councilmember Sterns does raise a point, though, that it, those constitutional prohibitions do not affect the ability to have hazard pay going forward. The prohibition only applies to work already performed by a public employee.
Okay, thank, yes, thank you. You know, in, in relation to this item, what I will say is the ad hoc committee took everything into consideration. We met individually twice ourselves to review this. And as Director Thomas mentioned, there was a, a list of, of items and projects that far exceeded the fourteen point seven million dollars. And the ad hoc committee was tasked with, how do we bring the number down to the fourteen point seven million, which was the, what we got and what we will get? It, it was not an easy task and it was not one that we took lightly, as you can imagine. But we felt that the list that we put together was one that was appropriately in place to help those businesses, individuals, nonprofits, others that are providing services in a more well, more rounded fashion in, in response to that. I will also defer to my other committee members, Chair Baggett and Councilmember Jay Raj, if you have any comments on this.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. The only thing I would add to that is that we did look at the priorities of all of these items. And not to say that premium pay for frontline workers, the thing of it is, as Councilmember Sterns mentioned, you know, where do you draw the line? We have so many first-line responders, our medical people, our police, our fire, pharmacies, our city workers that were out there all during this pandemic and are still out there right now. So where do you draw the line for this? Going back to the hazard pay that we looked at for grocery workers and the ordinance that was not passed because of that. It, it was hard to prioritize a lot of these issues. And we tried to put the, the value of the dollars that we did have. Right now, we only have seven million, a little over seven million that we've already received. And the other we will not receive until December. So we have to look at, at what area that we can actually apply these funds to that will do the most good, considering the, considered the environment that we're in right now.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'll jump in at this point. This was one of the most difficult decisions that we three had to make. And, and it wasn't just the hazard pay. There was other issues as well we had to work through. And given the amount of money that we had, I mean, I wish we had endless amount of money that we could use for everything under the sun, but it was limited. I mean, hey, I would like fourteen point one million dollars in my checking account, but that's not going to happen. And fourteen point one million dollars, two million dollars is for the city. And and all of a sudden, that fourteen point two million dollars seemed small with all the projects that's going on. And we had to balance things out to do the right thing for the city. And we just couldn't justify the hazard pay in that sense. It, it was, it was one of the hottest decisions that we had to make. We do value that the city is, that the employees are, we do value their, their input. And like I said, it was one of the hottest decisions that we had to make. Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So Councilmember Sterns, I think at this time, the, the ordinance is going forward as it has been written. I believe Director Thomas will be coming to us at the next city council meeting. So it will be coming forward in this proposal. And if there are other amendments set. And if there are other amendments set, council feels they are um, would like to make, that can be done. And uh, we can vote on amendments and then vote on the main motion as well. So there is a mechanism for being able to do this on that. But again, as you heard from the ad hoc committee, um, you know, we felt strongly that this was one of the items that that we needed to uh, address in that fashion. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, just wanted to point out that uh, uh, as uh, Councilmember Jay Raj and uh, DeCorcy have mentioned, we have actually looked at this thing very, very closely. And uh, you ha- you have to realize that uh, a- and I think a, a great deal of thanks uh, have to go out to our uh, directors and the staff and our mayor for coming up with this thing because when they first started doing this thing, they were up to a thirty million dollar asket, if you will. That was later tapered down by them to an eighteen, a little over eighteen million dollars. And we had the task of bringing that down to the fourteen point seven or fourteen point eight that you see today. Uh, because that's all that we were going to be getting. And uh, taking all that into, into consideration, uh, that's brought us to where we are right now. So a- again, this is, this is an estimate. This is a, a forecast. Uh, and maybe some of these funds can be moved around as they've uh, as they become more defined. Uh, and that is entirely possible here, but we have to break these things down into the major categories of work that we knew was going to uh, uh, that we would have to apply these funds to. And uh, again, there's the accountability and the responsibility of the city to to uh, monitor and report on our progress for spending these funds over the next three and a half years or so. So uh, again, it, it was a very arduous task and uh, I compliment my other members of the ad hoc committee for taking the, uh, making the tough calls that we had to make. Uh, but again, remember, this is a forecast. It's, it's a budget item that we have been given uh, by the government. And we're going to do the best we can and put the money where it will do the most good, and that's the r- the real goal. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. No, I, I just wanted to do it again to say thank you to everyone and especially the ad hoc committee. It's, it's definitely not easy and you know, um, I mean, the, the whole reason we're, we're doing this is because of the terrible, terrible pandemic that, that affected so many people and 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 actually took so many lives. So I mean, I wouldn't expect your work to be anything but hard. And and uh, so I certainly appreciate all the work you did and I, I just wanna yeah, I'll, I'll think about this, but I, I just really feel that it's um, you know, and I don't think comes, it should ever come down to a matter of, well, there's too many people to help. We can't, let's not help any. I, I think there is a way to, to build out from the central core to help some people at least and uh, you know, the, just, just recognize what, but they gave up so I could be safe and I could live my life the way I, I, I have in the past. And then I, I, I just wanna just, that, that's where I'm coming from. So I, I appreciate all of your um, all of your work and and uh, thank you very much Deputy Mayor for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you everybody. Uh, thank you for input, your comments and uh, Director Thomas, you and your staff and all the other department directors. Once again, thank you for the diligent work you all did on this and the tough calls you had to make as well as you went through this process and uh, really appreciate the work you did with us as an ad hoc committee as well. All right, council, we will now move into our Public Works and Community Development discussion items. And with that portion of the agenda, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Sterns.
Oh, wow. So quick. Um, uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. So we have uh, two discussion items um, uh, up for, well, discussion. And uh, I believe Director Tate is going to um, take the lead on the first one, which is um, a presentation on the shoreline master program, which I, I think is pretty much their Green River and the White River. Um, but uh, not to spoil or steal your thunder, but uh, just uh, thank you very much, Director Tate, for um, helping us out on this and and all your
Yeah, uh, good evening again. And uh, yeah, we're going to be talking about the Green Ri- River and the White River for sure. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel Gauck, who's a senior planner uh, with the Planning Services Group within the department. And uh, I know he's going to say a few words about this, but this is uh, the continuation of uh, the series of environmental presentations that department staff have been uh, providing this year, and there's more to come after tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Daniel.
Thank you Jeff, Councilmember Sterns. Uh, well, good evening. Um, my name's Daniel Gauck, like Jeff mentioned, the senior planner here in the Department of Community Development. Um, and tonight, uh, we have the third presentation in the Planning Services Environmental Regulations Series. Long in. Uh, this is the third in the series of six presentations uh, that will be given to council over the uh, over the course of the year. And we're to discuss the city's array of environmental regulations uh, and programs. Tonight, I'm covering the Shoreline Management Act uh, in the city's shoreline master program. Uh, presentation begins on page twenty-four of your packet, if you want to follow along. And then uh, to get through this uh, in a scheduled time, although you can hold off any questions until the end. Okay, so uh, to get started, what is the Shoreline Management Act or SMA for short? Well, it was enacted in the early seventies to manage and protect the state shorelines by regulating development in the shoreline area. These regulations are unique in that they administer, or in that the administration of shoreline permitting is a shared responsibility uh, between the city and the Washington State Department of Ecology. In the city of Auburn, like Councilmember Sterns mentioned, uh, this applies to all development or alteration within two hundred feet of the Green and White Rivers. These rivers are actually, or they're the only eligible waters uh, in Auburn because the water bodies regulated per uh, the SMA are streams or rivers with a flow of greater than twenty cubic feet per second, lakes of twenty acres or larger, and then of course coastal and marine areas. Uh, Auburn adopted its first shoreline master program or SMP for short in nineteen seventy-four. A, a major update was done in two thousand nine to update in response to some state legislative changes. And then the latest update, uh, which included mostly minor changes to keep it current with things such as definitions, was adopted by a city council i- at the end of uh, two thousand and eighteen. And this document SMP, uh, which is separate from the city code, it includes those development and use regulations as well as the permitting procedures for alterations or projects that lie within the area of the shoreline jurisdiction. And then uh, SMP has uh, in Auburn has three uh, distinct shoreline environment designations as well. The environment does, these environment designations prescribe the use regulations and development standards within the shoreline jurisdiction. Now, I'll, I'll explain these more in detail in a few slides. And then these environment designations uh, act like overlays um, and add regulations that apply to the underlying, or i- in addition to the underlying zoning designations. So the area subject to the shoreline jurisdiction is generally implies to two hundred feet from the river, river's edge. But then if there are adjacent areas that also contain critical areas such as uh, wetlands or floodplains, floodplain, uh, the shoreline just jurisdiction would, will extend along with those as well. Okay, so I've mentioned that the shoreline jurisdiction generally includes lands within two hundred feet of one of the rivers. But how exactly do we measure this? Uh, well, this is what's called the ordinary high watermark or OHWM for kind of shorter. Um, but uh, in general, it's measured from a spot on the river's bank where the wa- water rises to, rises to and for long enough to make a distinction in the soils and vegetation. So you can tell where the difference is there. And the ordinary hi- high watermark, uh, it can also change over time. These rivers are, are dynamic systems, um, which means they'll naturally meander, including the river's banks. Uh, the first one hundred feet of this two hundred foot uh, or two hundred foot area also must also meet the city's critical area standards, which require a buffer of native vegetation, which if previous, previously disturbed may be required to be restored or enhanced. Uh, this is the same as, as uh, council heard during the June critical areas discussion, we talked about buffers. Uh, and then within this buffer, this hundred foot buffer area, there's very limited development allowed if any. This native vegetation is important, uh, and contributes to the, the natural riverine processes uh, by providing shade, providing shade to the river to reduce water temperatures, wood recruitment for fish habitat, refuge areas, uh, filtering or stormwater runoff to protect water quality and, and many more. So this is an aerial, a photo of a home located along the Green River. Uh, the Green River is a water of the state and thus it's regulated, uh, it's a regulated shoreline area. Sorry about that. Uh, the, the green dash line is uh, is an estimate of where two hundred feet from the ordinary high watermark is located. And then in the area between the river and this, this line are subject to shoreline uh, development regulations. And then this orange dash line shows the one hundred foot vegetation buffer. This area needs to be preserved for uh, with native vegetation or, as I mentioned, restored with plantings. And then this buffer forms habitat for various species, species and provide shade coverage on the river, both of which are uh, aid in the protection of the federally listed endangered species in our region. Okay, so I mentioned the three uh, shoreline environment designations or shoreline environments for short. Um, there are three, there are three of these or, or zones you can refer to in that, in the city's shoreline master program. Uh, natural, on the left, there is intended to be the most protected with limited or no development activity allowed. Uh, shoreline residential probably seems obvious, but it's applied to uh, areas where there's already established residential uses or units. Um, or this is the main use and thus newer additional residential developments uh, are permitted, can be permitted. Found designation is urban conservancy, uh, which are areas that may not be as preserved as natural areas and might still have some potential uh, some potential to develop. And you might be wondering, why, how, how many lots are in the shoreline jurisdiction? Um, I don't have the count of how many lots are, but we did a query, staff did a query back in two thousand and nineteen. And there were about fifteen vacant parcels in the city that are, would be located within the shoreline jurisdiction. So why do we protect the shorelines? Well, there are three broad goals for the SMA, the Shoreline Management Act uh, that it implemented. Protecting natural resources, promoting public access, and reserving and encouraging these lands for water dependent uses. Um, projects within the shoreline jurisdiction, um, there, these are typically involving much more scrutiny from not only the city's perspective, but also outside agencies. For instance, the Department of Ecology has a role of ultimately approving or denying a shoreline permit after this, after a decision by the city's hearing examiner. Uh, yeah, the Department of Natural Resources or DNR uh, has jurisdiction for various easements and use rights of the actual river, such as to allow an overwater utility or bridge dressing. Uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife is responsible for permitting when there is actual work being done in the water. And the Army Corps of Engineers and or King County may, may be involved with the moment of a new levy, levy abutting shoreline areas. And lastly, but not least, the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe or MIT, their, their commenting party that has a major emphasis on ensuring fish habitat is restored or not as were adversely impacted. So this map, although quite busy to look at, is attempting to show that oftentimes when a project is within the shoreline jurisdiction, there are likely other critical areas involved as well. And other, other, other regulations may apply. Typically, typically, these would be the critical area regulations, which we talked about back in June. Um, or the floodplain regulations, which council will hear about in coming up in October. As I discussed at the previous presentation on critical areas, these hatched areas are from our uh, mapping system and they're only inventories. So anytime there is a uh, development proposed, they'll have to have site specific studies that, that they'll need to do. Okay, so now let's talk permitting. Um, and then also in regards to this, this image in the, in the middle there, uh, it's just kind of a visual to show you the numerous steps that some permits um, need to go through and I'll probably summarize these as we go, so try not to strain your eyes to, to read them. So typical process for a shoreline permit. Uh, typically, it starts with a pre-application meeting where we discuss what's going to be involved in uh, developing a site, not only environmental concerns, um, but also utilities, fire, uh, fire protection, et cetera. Uh, eventually, plans for the shoreline permit are submitted to the city and a public notice for a public hearing is distributed. And what's different uh, than a typical public notice is that for shoreline permits, uh, notice has to be given at least thirty days prior to the hearing as opposed to uh, the typical ten to, ten to fourteen days for uh, other land use applications. The hearing examiner then holds the public hearing and makes a decision of approval, approval with conditions or uh, denial of the permit uh, per the city's SMP requirements. If the hearing examiner approves with, with or without conditions, uh, then staff transmit the, transmits the permit to Department of Ecology who reviews this decision and ultimately will uh, deny or approve, hopefully approve uh, permit. And uh, al- also for reference, the city's hearing examiner is a land use attorney who is especially knowledgeable in deciding these types of uh, permits, projects. So there, within the city of Auburn, there are four types of shoreline permits or decisions uh, which are a letter exemption, letter of exemption uh, which generally apply to small maintenance projects to, for instance, a residence or public infrastructure. Uh, but also include things such as vegetation removal or restoration projects. Uh, these are decided administratively, so by staff and director and do not require public notices or, or a hearing, public hearing. These do however, uh, still require an application and a written decision by the city, by city staff uh, where we're uh, reviewing the project for consistency with the SMP. Occasionally, uh, these uh, these exemptions may need to go to the Department of Ecology for their review as well. So uh, there's still more uh, than just no action required reviews kind of thing. Uh, these next three types of shoreline permits uh, require public notice followed by public hearing as we discussed, as I talked about in that previous slide. A substantial development permit in general is, is an issuable permit uh, provided the project is meeting the predefined standards for setbacks and, and heights, et cetera, that's in the SMP. Shoreline condition, conditional use permit is similar to a substantial development permit, but the review uh, focuses on ensuring compatibility with the surrounding area and uses but the review focuses on ensuring compatibility with the surrounding area and use. Then lastly, shoreline variance is when a project looks to deviate from those predefined standards such as setbacks or height, et cetera, those are the typical ones we'd see. And then, like I mentioned, all three of these types of permits go to ecology for their final review and hopefully approval. So these images show some examples of projects within the shoreline jurisdiction in Auburn. First image on the left there is a levee repair by King County Rivers Section, which would require a public hearing and a decision by the hearing examiner and ultimately ecology. The, the construction of, for instance, an apartment or subdivision, that would also need to go through the hearing process. And however, construction of one new single family residence for a minor maintenance project like the image on the bar right there, for very limited in-water work, it would typically be completed under a letter of exemption, which is a typically a quick 30-day review and approval and with no public hearing or no public comments or okay. These are some more significant projects in showing these photos that because of their potential for river impacts, they would likely require a shoreline conditional use permit, which then includes a public hearing and public notice to go through that process. These are, these happen very infrequently in Auburn. They're big projects, but we don't see them too often. So I won't, I won't read word, these, or read through these word for words since the slides are in your packet. However, these are some of the common concerns that staff receives from applicants and interest parties when shoreline permitting is involved. In general, the additional timing and costs are major concerns and the 100-foot buffer adjacent to the rivers essentially unusable, undegradable. And as, as I previously, previously mentioned, rivers meander over time, potentially causing the, the 100-foot buffer, 100-foot buffer to change as well. Sometimes causing homes to be, to become within these buffers and therefore not meeting the shoreline regulations. And then this can create non-conforming situations, which then add complexity when a new project is proposed and the applicant for the new project questions why they have to meet the setbacks when they don't or didn't. While staff is sympathetic to these concerns, we also have, have to be able to explain to that applicant why these regulations are in place. And unfortunately, there aren't many easy sites left in the city to build on, so. What's happening? So maybe, council may be wondering how much shoreline permitting take place, not much. Although it can be complex and cost and costly, it is very frequent. So you can see there's since 2010, we've had five permits submitted and one house constructed, so don't go through it all. The recent updates, the 2019 updates council adopted to the shoreline master program. They hopefully will help to address and provide a way through these, these non-conforming developments. This slide illustrates some of the circumstances encountered. In the image in the lower right, that's taken directly from the SMP. This is what's referred to as the modest home provision, where you could have a vacant lot in between two non-conforming houses. And they'll do sort of an average setback. They, then you have certain restrictions on the sides of the development, like how big the house could be, how big your driveway or patio could be. So these, these environmentally short or valuable shoreline areas are increasing in intention. There are many efforts regionally to return shoreline and river banks to more natural conditions. For, for instance, or for example, council had a presentation back in June, right before that critical areas presentation from the YR9 program manager talking about these efforts, these regional efforts and their projects. These, these increased shoreline protection efforts are countered by increased development pressures. And as, as time goes on, the level analysis for projects in the shoreline will be increasingly complex for sure. And with that, I hope you enjoyed the presentation. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Wow, thank you, Daniel. Really, that was great. Do we have questions? I'll, I'll let you think of some, my colleagues. But Daniel, can you tell me, you know, so if, if there are like exemptions or maybe it's like a, a permit that, a variance that, do we, does the city have the flexibility or the authority to, you know, make it conditional on things? Like for instance, vegetation, you know, one of the big issues for salmon recovery is, you know, restoring a canopy. So, you know, for a house that's too close to the river and that you need an exemption or a variance. Did the city say, sure, but you know what, can you plant some trees near or brushes or whatnot near the river?
Um, yeah, well, I guess ecology or the letters of exemption. So there's, there's rules about the vegetated buffer that needs to be, but almost very few of the houses alike along the Green Rivers actually have that buffer because they were built before the city had these regulations. But so, so for instance, someone came in for a one single family permit, they just have to abide by the, by the rules of the SMP, like setbacks. There's a limited height of how tall your house can go. So they, they can meet all those and there's already a buffer there that it's usually a pretty straight, it would be a straightforward permit process.
Okay, alright. Oh, and I'm just sort of curious, how, how much does the river meander? Is there a way for us to like, look at a historical map of where the river was? How long did that happen?
Not too often. If you recall, I, I was trying to find the image, the YR9 program manager, when they did a presentation, they had a really good image of basically, you know, kind of one of the only areas that's meandered over the last 20, 50 years or whatever it was. Up down by on the group, down on the Green River. I could try to find that, or if you have access to their presentation, there's, there's a neat picture they have in there.
One thing that I'll add to that is that we do have imagery that shows not just imagery, but also mapping, historical mapping that goes back about 120 years. So we have different, we do have the ability to look and see how the river has meandered. Daniel's correct, a lot of times the, the, the big changes that occur in the meandering are a result of something that we as people have done that's good or bad. So it's usually, so like the, when Matt Goring was providing his presentation, he was showing a project right near Fenster Levy. Once the Fenster Levy project was done, there was massive amounts of river meanders that occurred as a result of that, and we see that as a positive thing. When we do the levee setbacks now like we did up at Reddington on the north end of town, we're seeing some adjustments in where the river meanders. Other than that, it's pretty modest and pretty hard to detect from year to year. And it takes decades to see many of the changes.
Great, thank, thank you guys. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, Daniel, thank you so much. I gotta say, that's a great sounders mug you got there.
I liked your shirt too.
Yeah, so thank you again.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so I believe next up we have a capital project status report. And my agenda indicates that is Director Goll.
Thank you, and I'm actually going to hand this over to staff to give you a brief update of where we're at with our capital project so far this year. As well as to give you an overview of one of our feature capital projects, our bridge preservation. So Ryan Von Drack, our capital and construction engineering manager, and Kim Trong, one of our project engineers is going to go through that with you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good evening, council. As Ingrid said, for the record, I am Ryan Von Drack, capital and construction engineering manager. And we have Kim Trong with us, project engineer. So we're here to report on the, the status of the capital projects as well as present the feature project for the fall quarter. So let's get started. This will go for me on my screen. There goes. So in the capital project status report, you will see that we have currently 41 active projects totaling over 76 million in project value. Of those 41 projects, 26 are in various stages of design and 15 are in some form of construction.
Ryan, I'm sharing your screen.
I'm not.
At least I'm not seeing it, so.
Yeah. Let me try that again. It looks like it's sharing online.
There we go.
Are we there now? I apologize for that. Okay, you see a graph, right? Perfect. Alright, so this is our standard graphic that illustrates and tracks the total number of projects that were bid for construction services the last five years against the total project cost for those projects. This year so far, we have six formally bid projects that have entered the construction phase, totaling just over 16 million in total project costs. So on the next few slides, we wanted to provide an update to what is shown in the current CPS for a few specific projects. We are focusing this presentation to projects that are now either advertising for construction bids or recently bid and are about to go into construction. The first project we have tonight is the storm renewal and replacement project, that's CP 2017. This project is on page 56 of your packets. This project will repair and replace segments of storm infrastructure at eight different locations throughout the city. The maps are a bit small, but the pictures on the left indicate locations of work. The four locations that are south of State Route 18. One of them is just north of Game Farm Park, and then we have three locations in the Lakeland Hills service area. And then we have four that are north of State Route 18, two that are in the West Hill and one in the Valley Service Area in downtown, and then one up in the Lee Hill area. This project opened construction bids last Thursday and we're currently going through bid verifications before awarding the contract to the lowest responsible bidder and entering the construction phase. The construction of this project is anticipated to begin in September. The next project we have is another multi-location project. We have the sidewalk and ADA improvement project and that's CP 2106. This project is on page 61 of your packets and will improve pedestrian accessibility and safety through upgrading curb ramps and replacing sections of sidewalk that are in need of repair at eight different locations, all meeting Americans with Disability Act requirements. This project is currently advertising for construction bids and the bid opening is coming up this week, Thursday. Construction for this project is also expected to begin in September towards the late latter part of that particular month. And then the last project I wanted to bring up for this part of the presentation is the 37th Street Northwest Flood Control Project. This project is on page 53 of your packets. The project is part of a, of a phased project effort that will reconfigure storm infrastructure along 37th Street Northwest, east of the State Route 167, as well as complete some surface regrading adjacent to the inner urban trail. The work that we're doing here is to help alleviate some localized flooding that occurs in the area. And the second phase will, for this project will come a little bit later, but will hopefully alleviate all of it. The current project is currently advertising for construction bids through our non-formally bid project or our non-formally bid process, so we're receiving quotes for this project instead of bids. But we anticipate going into construction for this project in late September. So these were a few of the projects we wanted to provide an update on, the previously issued CPS report. The next CPS report update will be complete and distributed at the end of next week. So now I'm gonna turn this over to Kim Trong and she's going to discuss the future capital project.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Hi, I hope everybody's doing well. So I'm here to present the future capital project. So for this quarter, we actually have two feature projects, but they're the same. They're both bridge deck preservations. They're the Third Street Southwest and the Lee Hill Bridge Deck Preservations. So with these project, we have teamed up with a consultant, KPFF, to look at or to evaluate the, the bridge decks, also doing in-depth inspections in order to come up with an appropriate preventative measures for these bridge decks. Next please. So first we have the Third Street Southwest Bridges. So at this project, for this projects, there are three different bridges, the Auburn 12, 13 and 14. They're located a little bit south of the Auburn Transit Stations. These three bridges were built in 2002, so not too old. Next please. So back in May, our consultant did an in-depth inspections and evaluation. So basically a visual evaluations of the three bridge decks. And overall, the bridge decks are in pretty good conditions. We didn't find any major damage or deteriorations or any delaminations. Delamination is basically a term for peeling or chipping of a concrete layer. So none of those, none of those were found, which were good. But however, we did find some narrow concrete crackings. What our consultant did was they used the, the crack mapping methods, which is where they go and basically kind of chalk out where they find cracks. And you can kind of see it in this photo, kind of on the lower left corner there. With that, it gives them a better or a better visual of where the cracks are and how extensive they are. So with, with just narrow cracking, and we're talking about pretty narrow, less than a quarter of a centimeter wide. Next please. So with that, we feel that with this project is a good candidate for a protectant sealer type of preventative measure. So we would go in and we would remove all the debris, remove all the striping, pressure wash, make sure it's all clean. And we would apply a protective sealant, so similar to this illustration here. We would fill all the voids and cracks and then provide a protective layer over the bridge deck. By doing so, we are preventing any future entries of moistures or debris or contaminants from getting into the cracks and to avoid damaging the, the rebar reinforcement underneath. So we feel that this is a good preventative maintenance for this location. Next please. Next please. So our next project is the Lee Hill Bridge Stack Preservation. Lee Hill Bridge is located at Eighth Street Northeast, spanning over the Green River. This is just kind of right before we go up the Lee Hill Road to the east there. Lee Hill Bridge was built in nineteen seventy-three, so a bit older than the Third Street Bridges. Next please. And same thing here, um, back in, uh, April, we did in-depth inspections and evaluations, and our consultant did find some deteriorations, um, in the upper inch to inch and a half of the bridge deck. Uh, they found some small area of delaminations and actually a few spot where they actually saw the rebar. So they also did the crack mapping like they did at Third Street, um, bridges. But in addition to that, because of the visual signs of deteriorations, it prompt for more testing to be done. And one of those other testing that they did, um, is called the ground penetrating radar, where it tells us, um, how much cover there are over these rebars, uh, reinforcement underneath. With that testing, the result came back as we found that there are on average, a little bit over two inches of cover over these rebar. But in a few locations, there are only a little over an inch, which is less than what we would like to see. Um, so we had to come up with an appropriate, um, measures to, uh, address that, which I'll cover in the next slide. Another testing, um, that we have also done is the concrete coring. So, uh, our consultant went out there and took six different, uh, concrete coring kind of at various locations of, uh, the bridge deck. They bring it back, and what they're testing for is for signs of chloride ions. So chlorides, it, once it gets into to the cracks and once it gets to the rebar, it corrode the rebar. So it's very important that, uh, we keep it out of the rebar area. Also, chlorides are are mainly the resultants of like deicing, uh, salt over the year. That's kind of how it it's, um, it's created. But so once we took those sample, um, when I got it tested, luckily, we only found chloride on the shallow layer of the bridge deck, so not very deep. Just the shallow layer is where we found the chloride. Next please. So in order to address that, we would remove the existing top layer of the bridge deck, so probably about an inch or so. So by removing that top layer, we can get rid of most and not all of the chloride that were found that were shallow in the bridge deck. So after, um, that layer is removed, then we would go in and seal all the cracks, uh, similar to the Third Street, to prevent any, um, future entries of moisture and contaminants to get into the cracks and eventually into the rebar. Um, during the inspections, we actually also did find some expansion joints that were damaged, so we'll be replacing those as well. So when all those are done, then we would apply a concrete layer. So the concrete layer that we're applying is going to be thicker than the initial layer that we remove. Um, so so in turn, that would give, uh, a thicker concrete cover over the rebar to provide more protections of the rebar. So with all these preventative measures that, um, I've mentioned, um, it is very important and and that we are catching this early on, all the early signs of deteriorations, um, in order to, um, perform these preventative measures to prolong the life of the service life of these bridges, to avoid costly uh, replacement of the bridge or any major repair. So it's important that we, um, that we have these projects next. So Third Street Southwest Bridge Stack, since the work is pretty minimal, we're estimating the project cost to be about four hundred and thirty thousand for all three bridges. Lee Hill, however, um, the decks, the the bridge decks is a little bit worse in condition, so the sc- the work is a little bit more extensive and there were more testing done, so we're estimating the project cost to be about nine hundred and seventy thousand. Fortunately for us, both of these projects are fully funded by federal grants. So federal grants are covering, um, a hundred percent of all the costs. So kudos to our transportation section for securing those grants. Um, our design of this, these two projects is nearing completion. We're anticipating the design will be done by the end of this month, and then advertisement and, uh, award will be next month. And for construction, we're anticipating it's going to be a two-season, um, construction phase because, um, they are weather dependent. Since the Third Street Southwest Bridge Deck is the work is minimal, and so the durations of construction should be fairly short. Uh, we've anticipate that it probably could be done this year. However, with Lee Hill, the work is more extensive, requiring a longer construction phase. Um, we're anticipating that projects, um, to be done in the spring of next year. So with that, it concludes my presentation, and I can try to answer any question anybody have.
Wow, that's wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, do we have any questions? Oh, we do. Oh, I'm in luck. Uh, I have no idea who went first, so I'll just go from my screen left to my screen right. So council member, Chuck Manuel.
Kim, thank you for a wonderful presentation. Um, I was just wondering on the Lee Hill Bridge Deck, uh, would you have to close the road and will it be one-way or would it have to be close in a a period of time to be able to, do the construction?
So, yeah, I, uh, we understand that this is a major route, right, to connect the people from Lee Hill to, um, the downtown corridor. So we have consider, you know, all the different options, and we feel that it's best and less impactful to not fully close the bridge. Uh, but but during construction, there will be times where we will have to close down a lane or even at time, uh, down to just one lane with alternating traffic.
So will you be looking at the the busiest time of day to do the construction so that you don't have to close it completely or?
Yeah.
So that is a very busy, you know, corridor as well.
Yes. So yes, we we will consider all that when we, um, schedule for the closures and, um, when construction start, definitely.
And yes, you're right. Kudos for, uh, getting those bend rule grants, uh, you know, so these are completely covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Jero.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Um, Ryan and Kim, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, Kim, I've got a couple of questions for you. On the Third Street Southwest Bridge Decks, uh, you talk about, uh, quoting that with resident sealers. My question is, is do we have to go back every year and, um, put a quote over it?
No, um, so we're not expecting to go back every year. However, um, with our bridges in the city, we do have kind of like a two-years inspections. So every, every two years we do an inspections. So at that time, we would would be able to tell if there's any sign of wear or, um, or if the sealants or, you know, kind of wear off, uh, we would be able to tell and then address it at that time. But it's not anticipated to be an annual thing.
So it will, it could be probably a two or three-year kind of a thing?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the other question I have is the, uh, tech deterioration on the, uh, Lee Hill Bridge. Are you gonna, are you gonna take off an inch and a half, uh, of the bridge deck and, uh, resurface it again? Is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah, so we're removing about an inch, um, of the top surface and then, um, seal all the cracks, replace all the expansion joints. Um, and then we're gonna, yeah, overlay it with a new concrete layer.
Okay, how many days are you thinking of, uh, it would take?
Uh, as of right now, we're estimating the whole durations of the Lee Hill constructions to take about thirty-four working days.
Okay, thank you very much, Kim. Really appreciate it.
And Kim, it's correct that the concrete layer that we're adding to it is going to be thicker than the inch that we're removing. So it's going to be a little bit of a thicker concrete overlay that we add on top of the bridge.
Wow, thank you. Um, Councilmember Baggett.
Well, I have an unrelated question for Kim or Ryan. Has any, any thoughts been given to a future, uh, uh, capital project for like Thirty-seventh Street, uh, from Auburn Wade out to, uh, West Valley Highway?
A, like a paving project?
Yeah.
I would have to check with our, um, our planning folks in the transportation group. I I don't recall one offhand. I don't know if you do.
I've been, uh, traveling that road continuously, uh, over the last several months, and, uh, it it seems to be getting really bad in many places, uh, especially down around, uh, the Ron Crockett, uh, roadway. But, uh, there's many areas there that are, uh, have potholes and other, uh, shall we say bumps and grinds there in the, uh, in the roadway. Uh, I'm just, uh, just a little concerned that maybe we need to bring some attention to that roadway and, uh, maybe in the, uh, future, give us an update on where where that may stand. I know that the capital construction project thing is, uh, kind of sensitive and, uh, it it's, you know, got budget uh, issues and everything else, but, uh, perhaps you could look into that for me, Ryan, and give me an update.
Right.
So if I can add to that, so that would actually be part of our arterial preservation program, which is through our, through our transportation staff. So unfortunately, Ryan and his staff don't necessarily set the projects, and they they basically take it from that initial scoping and actually take it through that construction and design process. So that's really something that we would need to touch on in that preservation program, which will probably be coming to you later this year to talk about preservation programs, uh, for both arterial and local streets. Because as you're aware, when we did the, uh, state of our streets report, both of those programs are running a little short of funds to be able to do everything that we need to do.
Alright, thanks, Ingrid. I appreciate the response.
Um, thank you. Um, Deputy Mayor, you you had your hand up at one point. Did you have a question?
I did, but Councilor Jeroz asked my question and Kim answered it.
Oh, wow.
It was related, related to the lifecycle of the, uh, of the, uh, of the ceiling. So yes, thank you.
Um, are there any other questions? If not, uh, Ryan and and Kim and Director Goll, thank you so much. Appreciate all of your, uh, work and, uh, what you're doing for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
To you, Director Deputy Mayor.
Hey, Councilmember Sterns. Um, Council, just as a, uh, a little bit of reminder, you may want to go through and review the transportation improvement plan, review the tip. Uh, look at all those projects. We just, uh, recently updated that as you're aware. But it's always good to, uh, go through that and look at the projects, and if you see something that is perhaps not on that, we can bring it to, uh, Ingrid's attention and to, uh, James Webb's attention and, uh, see if that may be added. But as remember what Ingrid said, that, um, we know we're short funds, and that's one other task of council. Yes, to look at potential funding sources for our streets program, so, um, just keep that in the back of your mind. Alright, uh, Council, any other discussion items this evening? Alright, any new business? Okay, everybody have a wonderful evening. Uh, wear your mask again. Uh, we are adjourned. Good evening.